Good afternoon. My name is Kathleen Brown, Chair of the Virginia Beach School Board, and it is 4:00 PM on March 25th, 2025, and I call this administrative informal workshop to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board chamber are Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Mr. Bowen Steele, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Mr. Cummings, Dr. Green, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Rogers.
And Ms. Dwyer is sitting down right now, and Ms. Felton will not be able to attend this meeting due to the death of her husband Winfred. Okay, we will now move on to School Board Administrative Matters and Reports. There are two medium lists. One is for school visits with the superintendent. The other one is for one-to-one or two board members with the superintendent. If you, you know the drill, but if you want a private meeting or don't want another board member with you, just make sure you X through the other one. I'll start going this direction with those. Do any other board members have anything to report? Okay. Seeing, do you? Okay, seeing nothing, we will move on to our budget update, and at this time, we will welcome Crystal Pate, our Chief Financial Officer.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Weems, members of the board, and Dr. Robertson. The purpose of this workshop presentation is to update the board on the ongoing budget process due to the lack of a finalized state budget. In this presentation, we will present an overview of Governor Yonkin's response to the budget amendments provided to him by the General Assembly, review the cost reductions to cover the deficit noted in the CION, seek the board's guidance when we do formally receive additional funding from the state to include how best to disperse the June 1st bonuses, and to discuss next steps. With regards to the $10.8 million deficit in the CION, Dr. Robertson asked staff to break this into two phases or parts. Part 1 includes those cost reductions that will have less impact on the division, while the Part 2 cost reductions will have more of an impact that we hope will guide the board on how to allocate new state funding. In February 2025, the General Assembly adopted amendments to the governor's proposed budget initially released in December. As you may recall, the governor had until yesterday to take action and respond to these amendments. He addressed the public around noon yesterday to outline his response, which will be discussed with the General Assembly later this week. Governor Yonkin's amendment provides an additional $166 million compared to his December proposal. This includes $85 million to raise the cap on non-instructional support positions. This was not something he included in his initial proposal, $52.8 million for enhanced special education. He reduced his initial request for college partnership lab schools from $25 million to $15 million. Additionally, he included $26 million to maintain the state's assessment system, down from his initial recommendation of $66 million. There is also $25 million to increase support for schools identified as off-track or needing intensive support under the new School Performance and Support Framework, $25 million for Virginia Opportunity Scholarships, $50 million for school construction grants and loans, and $134.4 million for a $1,000 bonus in June 2025 for funded instructional support personnel with no local match required. The first part of the cost reductions to cover the deficit in the CION are included on the next two slides. First, 22 positions will be eliminated with a net savings of just over $2.2 million. In your packet, you should have a handout with specific positions. Importantly, no staff will lose their job as these positions include those that were vacant or those where the employee met the requirements to fill another similar position. Finally, most of these employees on this list have met with their supervisor. Another approach to achieving cost reductions is through line item budget cuts, as shown on this slide, which accounts for an additional $3.6 million in savings. Rather than go through each one, I will highlight a few. First, we have reduced professional leave travel expenses across all departments by 10%, resulting in a savings of $174,000. We considered eliminating LexTalk, a communication tool for stakeholders, but the team viewed this as too valuable to eliminate, so we did redline it. A significant reduction comes from School Division Services, where we are cutting approximately $1.5 million through various efficiencies. Once again, more details on these line item cuts are included in your packet. Before moving on to Part 2 of the cost reductions, I want to remind the board that we did a similar exercise last year and reduced central office spending and line item cuts by $4.7 million. With the cuts in Part 1 included, that means in the last two years, we will have reduced central office costs by approximately $10.6 million. So now let's transition to Part 2 of the cost reductions. In this phase, we propose the elimination of 34 central office positions, resulting in a savings of $2.4 million. As mentioned earlier, you have detailed lists of these positions in your packet. As was the case earlier, some of these positions are currently vacant but play an important role in the fundamental support of the division. Others will require staff reassignment to budgeted positions based on their certifications. This slide highlights additional line item reductions totaling over $2.3 million necessary to address the deficit noted in the CION. Once again, the majority of these cuts fall within School Division Services, as they have less direct impact on classroom instruction. However, it is important to acknowledge that these reductions will have an impact on learning as these positions play a key role in maintaining clean, comfortable, and safe schools year round. Additionally, we are proposing the elimination of paying our new teachers an hourly rate for the time they spend during new teacher orientation. Moving forward, orientation will be incorporated into the in-service week when they are already under While the exact amount and timing of additional state revenue remains uncertain, we do know more funding will be allocated. To assist the board in determining how best to utilize additional funds, when they become available, we will present three options for consideration. The first option allocates the initial $4.1 million in additional state funding to increase pay on the instructional scale to 4.5%, ensuring that all staff, both those on the instructional and unified pay scales, receive a 4% to 4.5% raise in the next school year. With remaining funds, the administration recommends using up to $4.8 million to reduce the $10.8 million deficit, effectively restoring Part 2 cuts. And should any funds remain, the board could consider options such as a wellness stay or an increase to Pago. The second option is similar to the first option, but includes a 5% salary increase for staff on the instructional scale at a cost of $6.2 million. All other considerations remain the same. The third option involves the school board making recommendations to administration on what they want added to the budget based on additional state revenues when those revenues Moving on to bonus options for consideration, both the General Assembly and Governor Yonkin's response include funding for a $1,000 bonus to be paid by June 15th on SOQ-funded instructional support personnel with no local match required. However, the administration is concerned that this approach excludes approximately a third of our workforce not subject to such a bonus. We strongly believe that all employees contribute significantly to and play key roles in our success and should be recognized accordingly. Therefore, we present two options for the board's consideration. The first option is to proceed with the $1,000 bonus for SOQ-funded positions noted on this slide that represent 65% of employees. As you think about this option, it is important to note the difference between SOQ-funded and non-funded positions. Here are a few examples. Kindergarten aides. The state funds 36.87 of these positions. However, we have 242 kindergarten aid positions authorized, leaving a shortfall of 280.25 positions. Special Education Elementary Teachers. The state funds 310.33 of these positions. However, we have 405.2 special education elementary teachers authorized, resulting in a 94.87 gap. Special Education Aides. The state funds 41.85 of these positions. However, we have 456 special education aid positions authorized, creating a 414.15 position shortfall. As you can see, not all employees in these SOQ categories would receive the bonus, which presents a challenge with Option 1. Oh, I'm sorry. Now I gotta go back. The second option is to distribute the state funding for the bonus evenly among all eligible FTEs, which would amount to approximately $650 per employee. The board will need to provide direction on the preferred option by April 30th to allow payroll sufficient time for dispersment preparation. If you have any questions that don't get addressed this afternoon, please submit them to Dr. Robertson, Ms. Woodhouse, and all School Board members by March 31st. The General Assembly is scheduled to reconvene on April 2nd, and there is a possibility that the state budget may not be finalized as soon as anticipated. We plan to provide an update on April 8th, though there may be no new developments at that time. As a reminder, we are scheduled to brief City Council on the school board's approved superintendent's estimate of needs and the six-year capital improvement program on April 1st, and while the exact time has not yet been determined, it is traditionally held in the afternoon. That concludes the presentation, and we will be happy to take any questions.
Mr. Culpepper?
Can you go back to Slide 13 for a second?
Actually, she's going to.
You ran through a lot of important numbers here pretty fast.
Yeah.
I'd ask you to read this through again.
Okay.
The slide has the SOQ-funded positions for each one of those. Would you mind reading off how many we actually have in each one of those categories?
Sure. And so, there's, the first bullet is there's, it's the $1,000 bonus for all standards of quality funded positions. Those num, that number is 6,116.42. So that will include, when you look at the top, that's $6,584. So that's $1,000 plus FICA for those employees. So there is 1,704.75 SOQ-funded support positions. And this is how the state breaks it down in their cap tool on their tab. There's 3,630.
I'm sorry, Pete Pfizer, a second. Yeah, 1,704.75 SOQ-funded support positions. How many do we have? I thought you read those while you walked in.
So, I don't, we've not broken it down based on this. So what, you see right in the second sub-bullet, the number of unfunded SOQ positions. So we have 3,264.7 positions authorized over and above those 6,000.
Okay. That was all, thank you.
Thank you. On your line item cuts in Part 1, you have the TEAs at 150,000. What type of TEA positions are these? Do we know?
They're throughout the division. They can run into any area. I know that I have them sometimes for my Impact A processing for their cards. We have TEAs that need to fill vacancies because we don't have someone to fill a position.
And do you know how much on average we spend on TEAs? Just an average? And if you don't?
Yeah, I can get it for you. I don't wanna say something all the time.
No.
I've looked at a lot of numbers, but I'd be glad to get you.
That's totally fine. I just wanted, if we had that.
Yeah, I can get it for you, though.
Thanks.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. So I am curious, and I'm kind of putting you on the spot here, so I recognize that. Do we know roughly how much we currently have in Pago?
So we provide Pago on an annual basis, and I would have to double-check with the city because it's cash. And so they keep a running total of that cash for us, and so I can definitely get you that information. I don't wanna speak because we put that in annually, but because they maintain that information on our capital improvement program, I don't wanna say otherwise.
Okay, thank you, and I appreciate that. I, I just, I wanted to point that out and ask about it specifically because as we have discussed on this board, we have some challenges related to CIP, debt servicing, and you know, we can appropriate the funds, but once, once we use them, we have to transfer that to our debt service. And so, without making sure that we put into our Pago as aggressively as possible, it may be a bigger challenge. And so, I do think at times we need to have those conversations about Pago. And on a final note, I would also say that there's a lot in this presentation, and I believe that it would be best if we could, as early as possible, try to get some feedback to our superintendent so that we can kind of get around one idea of what the board is going to support. And then I see David Culpepper has one more question.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, though. Yeah, I just thought of one other thing. You had, we had one, two, and three options with the projection additions of state revenue, and then separately, you talked about bonuses. And I realize, I realize from the state's perspective, those are different pots of money to begin with. But it made me, it reminded me of something I was thinking about, which is that a pay raise based on one-time funds seems a little risky to me. Is it not to you?
It is risky, and we don't, we don't advocate that. So, yeah, we don't advocate that at all.
So that's my question. Is it, is it wise to consider, could we roll that in here potentially, using those funds as a bonus rather than a fixed pay raise as their one-time funds?
So the, it's, it's two separate things from the state of what's being awarded or granted to us. So, and the bonus is in the 2025 fiscal year, so that's why it's gonna have to be paid out. It's effective June 1st, it needs to be paid out in June. So that's a separate pot of money.
You're talking about the, your slide for the bonuses, right?
The bonus. So the additional state funding is coming in for the fiscal year of 2026, and so that will, that is not considered one-time. Once they give us that basic aid money and lift that support cap, that typically stays in that budget year after year.
Okay, so we can count on that, so we can use it for pay raises. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I do not see any other questions on that one. That brings us to our forecast of regular school board meeting agenda topics fiscal year '25, fourth quarter, April, May, and June. I will turn it over to Dr. Robertson. That forecast is in front of you in your packet.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So the forecast is in front of you, and I thought I would just give you an opportunity to take a look at it, see if you have any questions, rather than go through it month by month, if that's okay.
Ms. Melnick?
Dr. Robertson?
Yes.
Are you, have you started a, a running list of school retreat topics?
We haven't, we have not done that yet. The Chair did say, share with me today or yesterday that we needed to have that conversation about topics for summer retreat.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
I do not see any other questions. Do we have time for close? I think we do.
Yeah.
Quickest workshop ever.
We have time for trips in the chair.
Vice Chair Weems, will you please read the motion to go into closed session?
I move the School Board recess into closed session in accordance with the exceptions to open meetings long, set forth in Code of Virginia 2.2-3711. Part A, Paragraphs 1, 2, 7, and 8 is amended to deliberate on the following matters. Number 1, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body. An evaluation of performance of departments or schools of public institutions of higher education, where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of the specific individuals. Any teacher shall be permitted to be present during a closed meeting in which there is a discussion or consideration of a disciplinary matter that involves the teacher and some student, and the student involved in the matter is present, provided that the student, that the teacher makes a written request to be present to the presiding officer of the appropriate board. Nothing in this subdivision, however, shall be construed to authorize a closed meeting by a local governing body or an elected school board to discuss compensation matters that affect the membership of such body or board collectively. Number 2, discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning any student of any public institution of higher education in the Commonwealth or any state school system. However, any such student, legal counsel, and if the student is a minor, the student's parents or legal guardians, shall be permitted to be present during the taking of testimony or presentation of evidence at a closed meeting if such student, parents, or guardian so request in writing, and such request is submitted to the presiding officer of the appropriate board. Seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be convinced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter, namely to discuss (a) pending student investigations and complaints, including discrimination complaints at specific schools; (b) pending employee investigations, grieving hearings and complaints; (c) status of pending litigation or administrative cases; (d) consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and pending litigation matters.
All right, moved by Ms. Weems, seconded by Ms. Rogers. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for a vote to go into closed session.
So, Madam Chair, we have 10 ayes. The motion did pass to go into closed session.
Thank you.
Whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this School Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard discussed or considered.
Okay, do I have a motion for the certification of closed session? Moved by Mr. Callen, seconded by Mr. Cummings. And let's, okay, any discussion? Seeing none, I call for a vote to certify closed session.
So Madam Chair, we have ten ayes, the motion to pass for certification of closed session.
Okay, thank you, and we are adjourned at 4:58 PM and we will reconvene at 6 PM for our formal meeting.